I'm gonna try to order the meeting of the city council for the city of Lathrow Village. Madam Clark, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Present.
And you're gonna state where you are.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, present. I am in the city of Lathrow Village in the county of Oakland.
In the state.
Oh, I'm in Michigan.
Alright, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Roll call.
Things having issues. Bruce. Hey Bruce, are you there? Yeah, he's having audio. Hey Bruce, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, where the heck are you?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Uh, here and in Lathrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
In your state. Oh, you said Michigan. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ferguson, roll call.
I am in Lathrow Village, Michigan. I am here in my house, present.
In your county?
Oakland County.
Thank you. Councilmember Siddiqui.
Here, Lathrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Thank you. Councilmember Stallings. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance and it is going to be so exciting to have a Girl Scout by the name of Darby Steck who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Darby, you're up, hon. Alright, here we go. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
They're definitely your kids.
Indeed.
Nice.
I love it. Um, we'll do, um, before we move on, will there be a motion on the floor to excuse Councilwoman Donna Stallings?
Was there a contact to let us know that she wasn't gonna be here?
I did not receive a contact.
I did not receive any communication.
So, there's, okay, so I'm gonna do the approval of the agenda then? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, um, yeah, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can you do a roll call, please? You do not have to give your city, state, and county this time. We're done.
Roll call, Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Agenda approved.
Thank you. Next.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
I make a motion to have an unexcused absence for Councilwoman Stallings.
I'm not really sure. Do you do unexcused absence? I don't think that you do.
If it's not, if it's not an excused absence, it goes down as an unexcused absence.
I see. Thank you.
Um, so now all items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. So do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion on it? I don't think there should be. Uh, can you do a roll call, please?
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved.
Thank you. Next up for consideration will be the approval of monthly dis- um, dispersment reports for the month of September 2020 and quarterly investment reports, period ending September 30th, 2020, and the motion to approve dispersments for the month of September 2020. This reflects expenditures from the general fund, which includes police and fire services, recreation department, major roads, local roads, water and sewer services, and for the downtown development authority.
I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment report, uh, for uh, month of September 2020, uh, in a total amount of $589,693.43, which is made up of, uh, 200, approximately $268,000, uh, in expenditures from the general fund, uh, $8,700 for major roads, $14,265 from local roads, uh, $34,500 approximately from the D- DDA, and about $263,000, uh, from the water and sewer fund.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? I have one. Even though I was able to run through it really fast, I have a question on on, oh my goodness, I thought I had it up here, ready to go. But it was under IT Right. And it has a lot of different entries, um, for changing the access for the internet. Microsoft 365 is on here a couple of times. Surface Dot Home Office and Businesses on here. Another Laptop Label Writer, barcode scanner. But there, it, it's a bunch for under IT Right.
What page is that on, Kelly?
Um, I just lost it. Just give me two seconds. Try to find it. Uh.
Is this the document that was just emailed over or one just already in the packet?
Uh, it was emailed over, so there's one under government service, two under government services, four under government services, um, one under administration.
Oh, God, I was looking for them all together. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So was that, did, did IT Right just do a lot of updates for us or something, Pam?
Well, they updated our wireless system, our wireless, um, internet access here. They did do that. Um, there was one for the DDA that, um, they needed, um, Suzie needed for, um, Cory to have access so they could share documents. That was the one in the DDA. Um, the 365, I'm not sure, um, who needed that updated. I think that might have been a police department needed an updated, an update in the 365.
The 365 is under, um, multiple um, headers.
I think one of them was related to the, um, sharing of documents between, um, Cory, um, the intern and Suzie with the DDA so that they could share documents in the cloud.
Got you. And sorry, guys, but this is, uh.
No, you're fine.
And I see that Cliff is coming up under multiple headings. Awesome. So is he doing more than, I mean, it looks like he's, he's the all-around do-it-all person, so I just want some clarification. Cause I see painting now and, um, COVID and maintenance.
Correct.
And mulch and.
Yeah, I think that's what was in his contract when we approved it. His role would get expanded a bit.
Yeah, the mulch was at the gateway. I actually was walking the dog by him when he was doing it.
A couple of things have happened. One, we had not been able to, um, find people willing to do some of that outdoor work at an affordable rate and he was available, especially because we weren't using, using him for the community room. So in terms of capacity and affordability and someone that we could trust to get it done correctly, it worked out for both our ends to have him doing a lot of this work.
Does anybody else have anything?
No.
Okay, um, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, consideration acceptance of the departmental reports.
I'll make a motion to approve or to accept the, uh, department reports.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Siddiqui.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Um, looks like we don't have any presentations. Um, is there anyone that is interested in doing public comment for in, for items that's on the agenda?
On the agenda or not on the agenda?
On the agenda.
Okay.
Hearing none, um, go to the public hearings for the Community Development Block Grant. I'm gonna open up the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2018 to 2019 reprogramming. Anyone that wants to speak for the public hearing? Does anyone wanna speak for the public hearing? Is there anyone that would like to speak for the public hearing? Third time, nope, so I'll close the public hearing and we will move into our action items. First up is the fiscal year 2019, 2020 audit.
And then, Council, we have representatives from our auditors, Plant Moran, here to make that presentation.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Pam Hill, audit partner with Plant Moran, and I also have with me today Alicia Watkins, who is an audit partner with Plant Moran as well, and then Erin Sarver, who is an audit manager with Plant Moran. We're here today to briefly cover the results of the audit for the June 30th, 2020 fiscal year end. I know we've spent some time going through these in detail, um, with both management and council, so we do have a brief presentation, uh, that we have provided to you today to cover the results of the audit at a high level. We did spend approximately 275 hours this year auditing the books and records of the city, and we did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which basically means that you can rely on the numbers as they are presented, uh, within the statements. Um, along with the graph presentation today, you do have in your packets the basic financial statements and the end of audit letter, um, which we know you've had a, a chance to, uh, read through, and so we are just gonna focus our main presentation today on, um, on the trends in, in the fiscal year and how the, how the city's fiscal year went and kinda what, what the future looks like for the city as well as we move through the graphs. Definitely feel free to, um, stop us with questions or wait till the end, uh, or we're very happy to answer any questions that you might have throughout the process. And then just wanted to specifically thank Cheryl and Pam and their team. They do a lot to get ready for the audit. We have a very good communication throughout the year, which helps the audit to go so smoothly at the end of the year. As issues or questions come up, they reach out and we're able to kinda work through those items, um, ahead of time, and so we do appreciate that. Um, and, and we do appreciate the professionalism that we've received. So thank you very much for that. And with that, I am gonna turn it over to Erin.
Thank you, Pam. And I'm going to share my screen as we walk through this today. Alright. Can everyone see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. So today we're gonna to cover some of the, the trends for the last, uh, the current year under audit, which would be the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2020, as well as, um, kinda those results compared to the prior three fiscal years. So our first chart to cover today is the city's governmental fund revenues for the year. Um, this chart shows the past four fiscal years governmental fund revenue, starting with fiscal year 2017 on the left through fiscal year 2020. Overall, revenue has remained consistent for the past four years, rising from 4.6 million in 2017 to 4.8 million in fiscal year 20. And property taxes remains the city's largest revenue source, and that has continued to increase each year as taxable values have increased each year for the last four years. The city's second largest revenue source is the federal and state category, and that prime, consists primarily of state shared revenue and Act 51, uh, revenues from the state of Michigan. The, the next chart is the governmental fund expenditures. So showing how the city spent the revenues that I just discussed. Um, overall expenses have remained consistent in total from year to year. Public safety remains the city's largest expense category, with substantially all expenses consisting in that category of wages and benefits for the policemen and women, as well as amounts paid to the city's South Field for fire protection. Um, the second largest category would be public works, which is, consists primarily of street maintenance expenses for the city. Next, we did wanna briefly touch on the city's taxable value. This taxable value, the city will drive the tax revenue, which is the city's primary revenue source. So the higher the taxable value of the city, the higher the property tax revenue, the lower the taxable value, the lower the tax revenue that the city will have. This graph starts with fiscal year 2008 and 2009, which is based on the 2007 taxable values for the city. Um, and as some of you may recall, 2008, 2009, there was a significant crash in the housing market. That was then reflected in the city's taxable value, which is based on the fair market value of homes in the city. Under Michigan state law with proposal A, taxable value is not limited by how much it can decrease, but it is limited as to how much it can increase each year. And that limitation is subject to inflation or 5%, whichever is lower for capped properties. And as we can see here, it decreased in 2009 from 189 million to a low point in 117 million in 2015, and it has since gained back up to 145 million. But what that means is that our revenue still for property taxes is not up to the level it would have been in 2008 and 9, right when the market collapsed. Next, we did wanna touch on the state revenue sharing. So this graph shows two different things. The top line, which is the orange line, shows state revenue sharing if it was held consistent at 2001 historical amounts. In 2001, the state's statutory revenue sharing with local communities, which is set each year in the state budgeting process, was at the highest level it has been. Since then, the state has cut the statutory revenue sharing, and the bottom line shows the actual amounts the city has received. The numbers on the bottom reflect the cumulative lost revenue sharing. So if the city would have received historical amounts that held steady at the 2001 levels of $515,000 per year, the city would have had an additional $2.5 million received in revenue from 2001 through 2020. So this tells us that over the years, the city has experienced revenue shortfalls in both our property tax revenue and state revenue sharing, and as a result, has had to either generate additional sources of revenue or cut costs to make up that shortfall. Next, we wanted to talk about the general fund, fund balance, and this chart shows the historical unassigned and assigned fund balance of the general fund for the past four years as a percentage of total annual expenditures. Unassigned and assigned fund balance represents the true resources on hand that will be available to be spent after paying all short-term liabilities from the general fund. So essentially, the city has $1.5 million of resources available at year end in the general fund. Now, this does not consider anything of a long-term nature, such as long-term debt or pension or retiree healthcare liabilities. So essentially, um, we compare $1.5 million of unassigned and assigned fund balance to the actual 2020 general fund expenditures of 3.8 million, and that percentage is 39%. And what that means is if the general fund were to stop collecting any revenue, you would have about 40% of an annual year's expenses covered before you ran out of money. And now I will turn it over to Alicia to talk about our pension and OEPED liabilities.
Erin, maybe if we could go back just one slide to wrap up on the general fund and the overall results before we get into pension, that would be great. Thank you. I, I think what this slide also shows, if I could add to Erin's comments, is sort of the diligence the city has demonstrated and maintaining a strong fund balance relative to your budget overall, in really positioning the city to come into this pandemic strong. I, I think we learned after the last recession that maintaining the, the low thresholds for fund balance were, were just frankly not enough. And so we've seen a lot of our communities go ahead and move up, and, and again, some of this is assigned, so it's sort of earmarked for certain purposes, but you have a discretion to you sort of reallocate it. Um, but we've learned the importance of having higher fund balance, having a higher rainy day fund. And so it's just tremendous that the city's been able to maintain that year after year, and even in 2000 and, um, fiscal 2020 with the pandemic hitting, um, you know, just before the last quarter, uh, still being able to come in with this 40% um, fund balance is just, just tremendous and did position you well, uh, heading into this volatile environment. Uh, the other thing that I think is worth noting that we, we don't cover here is the city's, um, general fund results compared to budget. So, you know, the, the city would have come in right at about break even, um, you know, as we covered the revenue over expenditures overall, but for the general fund specifically, right about break even, which is really what you projected in your original budget, where you would be. And so, you know, kudos to your budgeting team for being able to, you know, frankly be spot on there. But at, at one point during the year, as you were kinda working through some things, that the city thought that you were gonna have to dip into your fund balance a little bit, and you had that budget amendment, um, but you were able to identify other source revenues, you know, kinda manage, um, the expense side, and, and again, coming at break even so that you really didn't have to take a, a dip there that you anticipated you were gonna have to take at one point. Um, so, so strong results overall, and, um, you know, we certainly hope that you feel, feel good about that. As, as Erin mentioned, uh, which kinda leads us into the next slide, um, you know, it does not, however, account for long-term obligations that the city continues to have, namely, um, pension liability of about 8.3 million, and then the retiree healthcare or other post-employment liability of about 7 million. So we can see there on the left with pension that you have, um, funded that, um, to the degree of about 76%. So the, the teal there representing the amount of assets set aside to offset that liability. So there's just a little over 2 million that's unfunded, or just about 24%. Um, and then on the, the liability side, the city, city really is just getting started with funding there and has established a trust to be able to fund that going forward. And so the $50,000 contribution, um, that was in fact passed by council, you'll see that kinda come through on the next valuation and start to see an uptick there in that percent funding over time. Then on the last slide, what we, what we really wanted to do and what, we're getting a lot of questions from management and, and, and council members, you know, wha- what are you seeing? How has a pandemic impacted us? Sort of what's, what's your perspective, Plant Moran? And so we just thought we'd add a slide here to talk through that as a group. Um, so there's really three areas through the end of fiscal 20 where the city has experienced lost revenue, um, primarily community room rentals, state shared revenue sharing, and then, um, a little bit of permanent revenue declines too, with a decreased activity from 2019. On, on the expense side, um, while the city has incurred, like, like most organizations, some anticipated COVID-19 costs for supplies and sanitation, you know, when we talked to your team, they would say, you know, it's not anything so significant that we really haven't been able to manage it with our budget. Hasn't been too much of a burden to this point. In terms of the outlook, right? So where do we go from here and what do we expect from here? Well, clearly in the state of Michigan, yeah, now we're starting to see cases, COVID cases, you know, on the rise again, um, over the, the past week particularly. And so what does that mean? None of us know, right? Um, but we know that we continue to, um, engage it in certain times. And so we do expect that we're, you know, that's gonna mean continued disruptions and likely continued declines in state sources, um, especially those that are discretionary as a state continues to balance its budget. Um, you know, as sales tax revenue may continue to be down, um, gas tax and other things. Uh, and really, we talk about, you know, you know, community room rentals being down as an example. You know, our, our local municipalities trying to manage, um, safety and accessibility of public facilities and having to continue to close down a lot of services that would otherwise be open, um, to your residents and to the public. Um, obviously though, as, as Erin showed, property tax, it is your largest revenue source. That was certainly a challenge, having that high concentration of revenue back during the recession. Uh, what we're seeing now with the pandemic is that, you know, the housing market here, knock on wood, is, is still going strong. You know, could that change? Certainly it could. Um, everything we've heard is that most economists just aren't predicting that if, that, that we're gonna see anything like we saw, uh, previously with the recession. So if something changes, um, it's gonna be to a much lesser degree, but, uh, given what we're seeing now, um, the market seems to be holding pretty strong. If that changes, y- you got a little bit of time to react to that, and we'll, we'll know in advance how the values are gonna come in based on the next assessment, um, and, and that likely wouldn't impact your budget until '22. Uh, we talked about this a little bit on the last couple of slides, that the city does have, um, you know, a decent amount of discretionary fund balance. Certainly, if we think about our, you know, our households, nobody wants to be in a position where you're, um, sort of living, you know, out of your savings account, right? Um, and unfortunately, you know, we've seen too many Americans having to do that here with the pandemic, but so we wanna be mindful of the balance, right? We can absorb some losses, but at some point, if the revenue declines, decrease, it'll be important to make adjustments to kinda get the budget back in, back in alignment. And, um, finally, uh, what we think is, um, is prudent is to, you know, continue the practices that you already have in place around budgeting and closely monitoring, and then even looking out a little bit further over a couple few years as to, you know, what some of the big decisions you have, you know, kinda on the horizon, where we think revenue's gonna go. Um, you know, anything that's coming up that we need to plan for as an organization so that you have time to build that into your budget and continue to adjust things as you need to with the pandemic. Um, so we, we think developing a budget, a multi-year budget's really important, but managing it and using it as a fluid tool is even more important, um, because of, of how much change we're seeing and how quickly things can change. So that really covers what, what we think are the highlights. Um, Pam or Erin, anything you wanna add? Okay. Any comments or questions from the mayor, council, or, or from the city management?
I've already asked all my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, same here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening.
Thank you. Oh, you're on mute.
The mayor's on mute.
I know. I was trying to talk to somebody. We needed to have a motion to accept the fiscal year 2019, 2020 audit, um, that was just presented from Plant Moran.
I'll make a motion to accept the fiscal year 1920 audit, um, as presented.
2020 audit.
Yeah, it did sound like we were 1920, but go ahead.
2020 audit, second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Just a brief discussion regarding, um, uh, water loss. Just a brief discussion regarding water loss that we talked about, and that's been documented in the audit. I recommend that as we move forward as a council, we should take priority and really try to see what's going on with the water loss. And obviously, it's a valuable resource. I think the city of Flint would agree that it should be taken seriously. And I think over the next 11 months, we should keep it on the agenda and get updates. So I propose that we try to set some sort of plan going forward in another study session and just really try to tackle and reduce that percentage.
I think that you're right, and I want to make it very clear that this has nothing to do with the quality of water. It has nothing to do with the loss of water. So the comparison with Flint, I just don't want to make anybody panic. It's just the loss of water. And yes, I agree with you on that part.
Yeah, thanks for correcting me. I appreciate that. Yeah, loss of water, not quality.
Anyone else? Your non-roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Council member Sadiki.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next up is the motion to adopt a resolution for reprogramming the use of the 2018 and 2019 Community Development Block Grant.
Mayor and council members, what we have before you is a resolution that would reprogram the dollars from community block, community development block rent allocations from 2018 program year in the amount of 7,000 and the program year 2019, the amount of 7,137 to be applied towards the reimbursement for the acquisition of the van that we're using primarily for senior programs. Thank you. This was the subject of your public hearing today.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution for programming the use of the 2018 and 2019 CDBG.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a.
Go ahead. Nope, go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to say, just a little, I remember I was confused when we talked about this before and I thought I clarified it in my own head. But then I saw this document here and I'm a little bit confused again. So are we proposing a total of 7,000 or are we taking the 7,000 from 2019 and the 7137 from 2018?
Correct. There was a misstatement within my cover memo. So it's a combination plus the 7,000 plus the 7,137 for the total of 4,000 and change.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks. I'm good.
And then, and this might be totally off, but seeing that it's talking about the van, I don't remember seeing it. The van is going to be, has the Lathir Village logo and everything that come out of this also?
The logo does not.
Neither slick was what I, the.
We do have a magnetic logo that we transfer to vehicles, so it doesn't have one independent of it at the present time.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Erin, non-roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Council member Sadiki.
Yes.
And council member Ferguson.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next up is the authorization of the emergency purchase of radar signs.
Mayor and council members, if you recall, about a week or so ago, I indicated to you that in light of the complaints that we're receiving in regards to the speeders, especially along our residential streets, that I wanted to go ahead and make an emergency purchase for the two radar equipment pieces with a total of, I think it was just under 6,500. And because that exceeded my, what I'm allowed to spend without council authorization, that I was asking for the emergency purchase. So this is the actual authorization from you relative to the acquisition of those two radar signs. And Chief McKee is on the line as well.
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know that we did receive the two signs today, late this afternoon. And we'll be working on those tomorrow and see how quickly we can get those in place.
Right.
All right. I'll make a motion to authorize the emergency purchase of radar signs for approximately $6,500.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
And just real quick, I just want to point out too that these signs, just for anybody that's watching, they do provide a lot more data than just how fast someone's going at that moment. So if you're thinking the city spent $6,000 to see how fast you could get going down the street, it provides time data about frequency, number of vehicles, average speed so that that information can be utilized by the police department to better apply their enforcement. So just, I just wanted to put that in there because I didn't hear that before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Scott.
Okay, your non-roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Council member Sadiki.
Yes.
Council member Ferguson.
Yes.
And Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Construction Board of Appeals, property maintenance.
Mayor and council members, if you recall, not too long ago, we adopted the ordinance relative to property maintenance. We also created the Property Maintenance Appeal Board, Board of Appeals. And the Construction Board of Appeals is allowed to also serve as the Property Maintenance Appeal Board. However, we have not yet appointed anyone to serve on that board. So in the interim, we are in an agreement with the city of Novi to use their appointed appeal board to serve for the city of Lathir Village. And there is, the next motion would be for the adoption of the fees relative to that application of 400 dollars.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the interim appointment of the members of the city of Novi, Novi's Construction Appeal Board to also serve in the city of Lathir Village.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
And that resolution was sent to you this afternoon.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Your non-roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Sadiki.
Yes.
Council member Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Motion carry.
Thank you very much. And it looks like that is all that we have for action items. Just want to go over this.
Mayor, if I could, if we could have a motion to adopt the rate for the Construction Board of Appeals and Building Board of Appeals to be $400 application fee.
Sure.
Make a motion to adopt the $400 application fee for the Board of Construction Appeal, the Construction Appeal Board.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Your non-roll call, please.
Roll call, council member Ferguson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. And council member Sadiki.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next up is city administrator report.
Just a couple of things to update you on. We received notification from the Bureau of Justice Assistance that we were awarded the Patrick Lee Hee Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant for the payment of, towards our bulletproof vests in the amount of $3,200. And again, I would like to thank Chief McKee for his efforts in regards to a lot of these grant applications. And also Pam and I and engineer Scott Ringler attended a meeting, a Zoom meeting today with Evergreen Farmington Sourd District in regards to their capital improvement plan for the entire system and its connectivity to the Great Lakes Water Authority system. So they want to increase that capacity and address the SSO situations. So we don't have all the pricing yet. Some of it will be covered by the system. Some of the upgrades would need to be covered by us, and we're meshing through all those numbers. All of the numbers are substantial, even just being a part of that system upgrade. So I just wanted to let you know that we are working towards that. I think the numbers we were hearing for system-wide is about $3 million for each community. Then if we don't pay that upfront, it would be spread over the 10 years of the bond issuance.
Thank you. Anything else? Your report?
That's it for now.
Thank you. City attorney.
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Reports from boards, commissions, and committees.
Yeah, I'll just do a quick infrastructure update. I think as many of you know, we have a road initiative on the ballot on November 3rd. I encourage you to go out and vote and, you know, make your voice heard. And in order to get information to help make you an informed voter on that proposal, we do have a lot of information that's available to residents. First off, we have fixlvroad.com. So that's fix, F-I-X, LV for Lathir Village and roads. So fixlvroad.com. It's a comprehensive website that will give you all the information and more that you would want to understand the road proposal. And then we also have town halls. We've done two already. One of them is recorded and is available online, and you can go to the city website for that. But we do have two more live town halls, I should say, live via Zoom town halls. The next one being this Thursday at 7:30 PM. So I hope you'll attend to come learn more about the proposal and have an opportunity to ask questions and discuss the issue. So, and that's all I have on the infrastructure.
Excuse me.
That's you.
Thank you. Any other committees or commissions? Okay, any unfinished or new business?
If I could, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Just want to remind everyone that November 3rd is Election Day. Please come out to vote, or if you'd rather, you can vote absentee. I've been receiving a lot of calls asking about early voting. I know it's being advertised as early voting, but the only voting that the state of Michigan has is either voting absentee or vote in person on Election Day. So if you would like to vote absentee, you can go to the city's website, lathirvillage.org. There is an absent voter application on the website that you can complete. You can email that to me. If you want to come in the office, you can bring it. At this point, I'd rather that you not mail any application. But if you must do so, please do so as soon as possible. I can give you your ballot here right on the spot. Once you come in, I need to see your picture ID, and I can issue you a ballot. The very last day that I can mail ballots will be October 30th by 5:00 PM. October 30th by 5:00 PM. There have been lots of updates and different information given to us with this election. But I want to make it clear that if you spoil your ballot and you'd like for me to mail you a new ballot, then I must receive something in writing saying that you have spoiled your ballot with your signature on that note, or either you can send me another absent voter application just indicating that you have spoiled your ballot. The last time that I can mail you a ballot, if you spoil it, is October 30th by 5:00 PM. That's the last time I can mail you a ballot. If you spoil your ballot and you need a new one, that's the very last day that I can mail one to you. If you spoil your ballot, you would like a new ballot and you're going to come into the office to request one, the very last time that I can do that is by November 2nd at 10:00 AM. So these are the two changes that have just occurred probably last Thursday. So there's so many dates and times and timeframes. If you would like a ballot, stop by the office and I am able to give you one. But the very last time that you can get an absent voter ballot is the day before the election by 4:00 PM. And I need to see your picture ID. If you come in on November 2nd, you have to stay in the office and vote your ballot. You can't take it home with you. The clerk's office here in Lathir Village is going to be open on Halloween, October 31st, from 7:00 AM until 3:00 PM. Just want to remind everyone, if you want to vote absentee, return your ballot. You can do so at that time. We have a new drop box courtesy of the state of Michigan that's located at our south entrance of the building. And it is noted on there that it's an official drop box. So it is safe. It is locked. I check it a few times a day. I check it over the weekend. And we also have the drop box that's in the parking lot by the police cars as well. So you can drop your ballot there. You can bring it in the office. We have a drop box near our offices here inside the city building, city hall. So I just wanted to let everyone know that if you want to vote absentee, there are, these are your options to do so. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me at cityclerk@lathirvillage.org. Or the phone number to my office is 248-557-2600, extension 226. Thank you. Thank you for your time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Detective Kada. Does anyone else have any unfinished or new business? Okay, public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak from the public? No hands raised. Okay, thank you. Mayor, or I guess it's me, or council, any comments there?
Yeah, I'd like to make some thank yous for people who came out. I think it was a week ago Saturday. We had a dog park workday. I know many of you are excited to hear that we do, we're opening up our first dog park sometime. Cheryl, when is the official opening? I think I saw Chris mention it. I thought it was mid-November, maybe?
Yeah, that sounds about right, yeah.
Yeah, sometime in mid-November, behind the, kind of between the Annie Lathir School and city hall. But we had several people come up and give out the better, give up the better part of a Saturday morning to do a lot of work. So I want to thank Hugo Cardenas, Dan Gillaran, myself, Rob Winkworth, Owen Winkworth, and then Corey Dahl and Megan Menefee, who put it together and also worked that day as well. So we're excited about it and it's taking shape and see our furry friends there soon.
Bruce, the date is November 7th.
That is sent out, Cheryl, to everyone and that it is kind of followed up on, that everyone knows the date is November 7th?
Or are you calling everyone?
Council emails to council to make sure that we're all there, or at least invited there.
Okay.
Are there any rules that are going to go out prior to the opening of the dog park?
Well, Chris, I know Chris is working on that. There's a dog park group committee, I think, and they're working. You know, we had some meetings about a month ago to talk about potential rules, safety, all that kind of stuff. And then he formed an actual committee to work on the rules. So those will be forthcoming.
Okay.
And how is the committee formed? And how was the committee formed?
Chris, Chris took volunteers.
Anyone else? Here in Nun, then I'm going to go into adjournment. If anybody wants to make that motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
In second, I hope you all have a great rest of the week and we'll see each other soon.
Thank you so much. Don't forget to vote.